The time is 4:30 PM. Melgram City Council meeting on 13th April 2021 is called to order. Ask at this time if those that have not signed in would sign in on the clipboard on the end of the table there by the podium, and everyone please put their cell phones on library. We'll call a member. Danielle?
Councilor Steve Strahan.
Here.
Councilor Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilor Kurt Markoff.
Here.
Councilor Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Fraser.
Here.
Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in the council chambers, also those that are watching our meeting via Zoom technology, and those that will be watching our council meetings on Wednesday evenings on Channel 14. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. This week, April 12 through 16th is severe weather awareness week, and on April 15th, which is Friday, excuse me, Thursday, is statewide tornadoes in Minnesota. Thursday, April 22nd, 2 to 3 PM, Local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting here at City Hall, that is Thursday, April 22nd. Third, excuse me, Tuesday, April 27th will be our next city council meeting here at 4:30 PM. Any other announcements? Any other announcements?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The time began on Thursday is...
For which?
For taxes.
Oh, 2 to 3 PM.
Alright.
Any other announcements or questions? Okay, hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in indivisible liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Anyone here for citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, move on to item number three of agenda additions or deletions. I have one change of some verbiage on item number seven, which reads Wasdorp deed. It should read Wasdorp judgment satisfaction. Item number seven should read Wasdorp judgment satisfaction. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm willing to accept the agenda.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same? Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I'll read as... Item number four is approval of minutes from the council meeting from March 30th, 2021, and also the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting on April 1st, 2021. Item 4B is approval of unpaid listing. Item 4C, to certify unpaid administrative penalty for 4-7 Northwest Second Street, and unpaid utility bill for 115 Southeast First Street, to property taxes. Item 4D1 is staff report, a police chief report, which is in our packet. And 4D2 is financial report, which is in the packet. Your motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as read.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same? Motion carried. Item number five is street and park report. We have Superintendent Brian Olson with us this evening.
Pretty much short and sweet tonight too, so the nice weather, we had been curb-to-curb sweeping, is a little over 90% done. We've got most of the downtown left to do, but it's good to get that done. We've had those streets, the gravel roads bladed, but if you've noticed down on Great Northern Road, we've been trying to drag that a little bit where they put that new water line in and made the connection. It's pretty soupy down there, so we are working on that, along with trying to keep the water flowing when it rains, and now with the snow and the storm drains, so that has kept us fairly busy. Skating rink is cleaned up and put away for the year. Pretty basic there. Parks have really been used a lot this year with, so far this spring with the nice weather, so we've had some pickup and stuff to do up there, which has been good. And then also in Peterson Park, we're just removing, kind of slowly working on removing the pea gravel, and we'll end up removing the equipment in preparation for the new playground equipment coming in, which hopefully will be in June, so... That's what I have for you. Any questions?
Any questions, Brian? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve, as you thought?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same? Motion carried. Thank you, Brian. Item number six is inspection fees and fines, and we have Roger and Luanne Schlesky here this evening.
Yeah, no. We couldn't get some of that done because of the COVID. Half of my renters seem to got that, so we didn't get it done in time. Here I got these. We can show you what the fines are, and I'd like to... We already paid all the other fees, but this is just the fines.
Why weren't they done then?
We couldn't get... In or Sid wasn't here for a while, and then he had a bunch to do, and so we didn't get them all done in time, by the end of the year. And I didn't want to go into some of them. Because I'm 75 and I don't need it. We just like to be... I mean, start out where they can't afford the $2,800 here for a fine. And I'd ask that they just... We already paid all the fees, which is $60 per unit. About $3,000.
I believe we did postpone some inspections on other, on properties?
Yeah. They did. I think... I don't know, Evans is dead, I don't know how many you got left.
Did you supply the building inspector with the address of these properties?
Do I?
Did you provide the inspector the address?
Oh, yeah.
City DAP has anything to add?
Well, like every year, we send out the notices to do, notifying everybody that they need to get their applications, their fees in, their inspections and everything done. We send them out at the beginning of September, and with... And they're all aware that it has to be done by the end of the year. We didn't hear anything from Mr. Schlesky until November, Inspector Properties. And so we had a couple of them, I think in November that were scheduled, and then he canceled appointments, and then there might have been other ones that were rescheduled again, and Sid would go and do the inspection, and it was very clear that they weren't ready for inspections, and so Sid would just basically cancel it and say, "You're not ready for me," and he'd leave again. Doesn't have to be rescheduled, and it wouldn't get rescheduled. Couple of them had failed, and after they failed the need of re-inspections, he never got back and got it scheduled again. So I don't know for sure how many of them were done, if any of them were done by the end of the year, but again, we started in September. He didn't contact the city to try and get any of these taken care of until sometime in November, and then as of January 1st, and there was 13 rental properties that is, that did not get completed. I don't believe that any of them, and obviously there was notices then sent out several times, and three or four, five times, notices were sent, with not notices necessarily, but invoices for the late fees and everything. And I don't think any of them were scheduled, finally scheduled to get inspected then until well, well into, I don't know if it was March or what it was, but Roger didn't mention, and I know when he had conversations with staff, that's all staff was asking for was, can you... Because they're not all COVID related. Can you give us the ones that have COVID concerns? And he wouldn't give them. That's all he needed to do was supply us with ones that were COVID concerned, because obviously...
I did.
He didn't, no you didn't.
I told her about them, and I said, "What do you want me to do?" She said, "Well, I should do write a written bill." Well, I said, "I don't know which ones they are." She said, "Well, you go to inspect them, you've got to make sure that they're there, and there's so much COVID going on, it's not like this, you wouldn't even have, you don't even have this place open." And we're supposed to go in all of them apartments? I go in the ones that I have to go into.
We asked him to provide us with addresses of the ones that he had concerns about, just like the other rental property owners did. He didn't provide us with anything, and again, he didn't mention anything about COVID September, October...
Don't lie to me. Talk to your staff.
...September, October. He didn't contact us about any of these until November. There was no COVID reason at all, beginning in last year. The COVID reasons came up after the New Year, when we started billing him for fines.
You mean you never had COVID? Why was your place locked up then?
Right, Roger, why was the, why was there such a lag?
Because of the COVID, because we couldn't get into some of them, and there was so much, I had...
But you didn't provide the addresses, which I wanted to hear.
I told her, and it was all of them, the ones that we couldn't do. That's what we were talking about.
You were expected to provide the physical address, which you did not.
You got them all on a piece of paper that aren't done. Why do you need another one?
According to staff, when he had the conversation with staff, his comments to them was, he had some with COVID. So they were asking, "Well, then give us that address." He didn't say all, he said some. We just wanted him to provide addresses, and he didn't do that. And again, it wasn't, COVID wasn't an issue. It was never brought up until after we started billing him for fines, for late fees.
Well, Sid wasn't even doing inspections, so why are you telling me that?
He was doing inspections from September 1st until the middle of December. And you didn't do anything for any of these until November, and there was never a COVID reason prior to January 1st when he got the late fee.
So you expect me to pay $2,800? And you didn't even have an inspector? All the time. Go ahead, you talk.
Yeah, every, every year there's been inspections, they've always been done on time. It was just the only year we've had a problem. And it had to do with the inspector also, and then with our people being sick, you didn't, we didn't know who was sick. So, you know, we're supposed to go in these places and take a chance on getting sick ourselves, but every other year they've been done, we never had a problem. So this year was a problem, alright.
Well, I do know that the inspections did go on.
Yeah, they resumed them after February. And there's no reason that they can't extend, or, you know, why does it have to be done the end of the year? I mean, it couldn't be extended. I mean, it was an exceptional year where there was all kinds of problems. There's no reason they couldn't have postponed for a couple, two, three months, when it was safe to do something like this. As I see it.
Like we had mentioned, there was others that had, they had concerns, some of the apartment buildings, the other ones, it wasn't all of the units, it was some of the units, and so we worked with them and said, "Same thing, just provide us with which ones have concerns, and we'll work around that." And other ones did. And the other landlords did, and we worked with them.
Correct.
They, the Schlesky's would not give them, staff, any addresses to work with until after the New Year, when all of a sudden now we've got the late fees and everything in place.
You've been on the late fees long before that. Sid even said he didn't want to go into them apartments. I called him several times.
Sid's been inspecting apartments before?
I know he has. He said he didn't want to go into them apartments.
That's not true.
Okay, you ask him. I'll ask him.
Counsel, any questions? I could have my attorney look at it too.
How many of these 14 units have not been inspected?
They're all inspected now. Everything's done.
But it took, basically, 14 units were all late. So, so about 14 times 100. And then there was nine weeks, okay, nine after the first of the year when that late fee went in, and then the other part of that is 10 bucks a week until it was done. So all 14 of them went a total of nine more weeks before they got finished. So there's 1,260 bucks. And then some of them failed, five of them there were re-inspect fees for a total of 125. You add all them together, you get 2785.
So what I'm hearing, Roger, if you would have supplied the addresses, and if you would have communicated with City Hall...
Well, they did. They were talking to her all the time.
I hear you didn't supply the addresses.
Addresses, they're all right on there.
This doesn't mean anything today. At the time, the inspections were due, and you did not supply the address.
There was other ones too, that, you know, other landlords too, that did not provide addresses for us, and they were late, and they paid the late fees.
They paid the late fees, okay.
Well, what do you want me to do then? They were talking about putting it on my taxes? I just have my attorney call you guys in?
We're not that far yet, right?
Uh huh, okay.
Does this automatically get certified to his property taxes, or is he able to pay?
Danielle, you want to answer that?
Yeah, he, I, he was sent a bill, he has not paid it, he was sent a bill the beginning of January, and since it hasn't been paid, then I sent him a notice of intent to certify. So, so then he has a right to a hearing, and that's why he's here talking to Council now. I don't have to certify the taxes, I can, we can set up a payment plan, if that works
Roger, would that work?
Pardon me?
Payment plan?
Pardon me?
The penalties, if you make a payment plan to pay that a monthly?
I don't feel that I should have to pay it. I mean, I just don't...
So your answer is no?
No, right. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, nobody else had to pay these fines?
Yes, they did.
Did Evansons and all the rest of them pay their fines?
The ones that were late and got fined, paid their fine.
Did I ask you, did Evansons pay their?
I haven't talked about any specifics. You never did? Just like I wouldn't talk to anybody else about your property. But I'm just saying, the ones that had...
You didn't want to treat everybody the same?
We are. The ones that had late fees and got fined, the late fee.
You just said you have more properties where your delinquent bill is bigger. Both all in proportion.
And just keep in mind too, the property owners that basically, that we were working with, they all notified us of the issue or the concerns prior to January 1st, when the late fees were going to kick in. We didn't hear anything on his properties until after the bills, you know, the late fees kicked in.
Is this the first time this has happened?
As far as the... Of them getting all their properties done before the end of the year?
Yeah.
I don't have that information right in front of me, but I'd be surprised if every year they had them done on time. Do you know off the top of your head?
So then the next step would be to certify it to property taxes?
Yes, that's what I'm asking, Council, instead of your fines, you don't think penalties and fines to property taxes?
So we know he received, they received notices September...
Yeah, he paid it in October. So he would have...
Paid what?
Paid the original bill.
The charges that everybody has to pay to reinstate their license, the application fees and all that stuff, he paid all that. So all that stuff's been paid, he just did not get the inspection done, because there was other properties that he has that didn't require inspection.
And he set up times to get inspected, and then he canceled them. He was set up to do it November 19th, he was set up to do it November 24th, and then also December 1st, December 3rd, December 8th, and December 10th. Were all marked off of the times that he set up to do inspection.
And that's the other point, he set, he set the times to do these inspections, never mentioned COVID. Never mentioned COVID at all. He scheduled them up. Or if he mentioned it, we were trying to get the addresses from you, so we knew which ones could be inspected and which ones couldn't be inspected.
What were we talking about all that? COVID. The whole works, it was nothing but my apartments, the turkey plant. It was a zoo. I had guys that were quarantine, a bunch of them.
Counsel, who would you like to add?
Well, I got another question on the day that Danielle just mentioned. There were appointments made by Roger, and then Roger canceled the same appointments?
Yeah.
Was there any reason given when he called to cancel? What the reason would be?
Um, no. I do know that he, he said because of COVID, and we asked for a list of apartments, or a list of properties, and we were never given a list.
On those days though?
I couldn't say for sure.
Because each date should have had some kind of address attached to it, right? As far as, because Sid's going to have to know where to go.
Yes. That's not usually how it works though.
I'm assuming that some of those too were dates that he scheduled, and Sid showed up to the inspection, and then departments weren't ready. In some of the cases, Sid shows up expecting to inspect the apartment, and Roger starts changing batteries in the detectors and all that stuff, there's Sid sitting there, and so Sid would just say, "You're not ready, you need to go," he'd leave. Not there to wait for some reason.
It only takes a minute, I turn my pot.
But that's not what Sid wanted, wanted people to be ready to go and inspect it. He's got others to look at and do also.
Well, I'm very close contact with Sid, and I'd ask him if he wanted to go to them, and that's why we canceled some of them too. Because we, I said, "Well, I got COVID," and they said, "I don't want to go down there either." And I don't want to bring it back to Luanne. I mean, I've never, I don't think I've had the 19 yet, but we've been in, you take 40 apartments, 30, 20, whatever. And Sid, he don't like going in them either.
But the bottom, excuse me, the bottom line is, if you would have supplied the addresses, you wouldn't be here today. What situation?
I doubt that. Because we had the addresses that are right on that piece of paper.
We're not concerned about a piece of paper we received today, it was when the question was asked, "Please supply the addresses," and you didn't oblige, correct?
Well, I said, "All the ones right on the paper, the ones we were inspecting."
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is taking up an enormous amount of time by city staff, and I support our city staff, and I know to certify the unpaid penalties to property taxes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I request roll call, vote.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote, Danielle? Do you want to read the motion, and then do the roll call, please?
Um, so Strahan made the motion to provide unpaid penalties to property taxes. It was seconded by Foster. We'll call Mr. Strahan.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard. Mr. Markoff.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
And Mayor Fraser.
Aye. Motion stopped. Thank you.
The attorney, I'll give you a call, and they can figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to hold it for court? We can go to jury, or we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, Wasdorp judgment satisfaction. We have Attorney Greg Larson here this evening. Attorney Larson?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Don Solga had contacted me last week, it's my understanding Gary Wasdorp had contacted City Hall because of a pre-existing judgment that was attached to his property as a result of a resolution signed by the counsel back in 2017, I believe, identifying his property located at 129 Northeast Fifth Avenue, Pelican Rapids, Minnesota, as the resolution ordered the repair or removal of hazardous, hazardous materials, or, I'm reading the resolution as it speak, as it reads, but it was essentially deemed a hazardous situation, so it, the counsel resolved to identify it as such. What typically happens in that case is the property owner gets notice, if they don't comply with this, within a certain period of time, then my office would move to the court and get a judgment to enforce the action. I don't know offhand the repairs or hazardous conditions that were needed to be addressed at the time, but based on my understanding, when I discussed it with Mr. Solga last week, everything's been addressed properly to the satisfaction of the city at that address I previously mentioned. So Mr. Wasdorp, in order for him to move forward, he came across the issue of this judgment still coming up, and has requested the city to get the judgment removed. So I prepared a satisfaction of judgment that I would sign as the attorney on behalf of the City of Pelican Rapids. It's a one-page document, I have a copy of one if any of the council members would like to see it. Does anybody want to see it? This is the document.
Yeah, they have copies, yes.
I'd do filing with, I'd sign and file with the court, and all it really says is, as my...
I got an extra one.
As you can see, it just simply states that I, acting on behalf of the city, am filing this document to satisfy the judgment that was entered into on April 25, 2018, in favor of the city and against Gary Wasdorp. And if the counsel moves to allow me to proceed with signing this and filing this, I would do so, and then the judgment would be satisfied, and Mr. Wasdorp's goal of having that removed... do so, and then the judgment would be satisfied and Mr. Wazdorff's goal of having that removed would be taken care of.
City staff have any comment?
No.
He's actually right.
Yeah.
We need to get that released so that Mr. Wazdorff and we get telling and hopefully develop some property, somebody will.
So we pay the extra expense for Greg and, right? I mean, it's just how it is?
We're the ones that basically, the city took the steps to have the home removed because of the hazardous buildings, so it's only right that we would have to.
Okay.
And we put the lien on it, so whatever it is, the judge...
It's a judgment, it's a judgment, it doesn't show up with the...
It's only right that we take it on.
Okay, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 What was the saying? Motion carried.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Attorney Larson. Item number eight is park board minutes, which are in your packet. Any, this is just an FYI, any questions regarding that? Any questions? Hearing none. Item number nine is library reports, which is in your packet. Counsel, Markoff, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Let you know what we got accomplished during our last meeting. The library is set to return to a full 46 hours of service as soon as, as soon as May 3rd or when these restrictions are lifted. There'll be a little change in the hours of operation, it'll be Monday, Tuesday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The board deemed that that would probably be the most user-friendly hours to go back to the full operation of the library.
Can you say those hours again, please?
Here, Monday and Tuesday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Hey, thanks.
The Library Foundation, or Friends, I think you've heard me refer to them as Friends of the Library, has got some plans for this summer, hopefully to open a book truck, increase sales. That's been closed for a while due to, obviously, the COVID. There was a chairman's discussion where the city council had been sent a letter requesting reinstatement of Annie's vacation hours. And has yet not heard anything, any conversation about that, I think I'll be bringing that back up tonight. And a discussion was had about the Minnesota Bureau of Mediation and pay equity, since we haven't heard anything, and of course, our pay equity date. We did receive a letter that our pay equity would be due, however, when they were contacted, the answer was given again that, no, it won't be due right now. So, until they work that out, apparently that's still up in the air. Out of the library meeting, the fundraisers that we want to do is the book truck, like I mentioned, and hopefully some of the used books at the Historic City Hall again, sales are good there. And Little Library in the Park will be operated by KKO. That's pretty much what's coming out of the meeting this last week. Any questions on that so far?
Well, nothing on that, but I'd like to know where we're at on the roof.
Well, that was also discussed, where the roofing deal is still a mess, there's items, punch lists, I had that on my sheets, but I don't see it right here. The punch list items were sent to, apparently sent by the committee, roofing committee, to the architect. And then the architect, I think, kind of approved the punch list and I think has been in contact with the roofer. They were supposed to be there, I think told that they might be there in a couple weeks to start on the punch list, but other than that, no. I think we're supposed to move forward with contractors to look at some of the damage that was done inside, you know, painting and things like that. And then give those quotes to either the architect or the builder, I don't remember which, of course, it'll have to go through the architect, but, and then they'll decide which one they want to pay to do that work that they won't do. A lot more to come on that, I got a feeling. Because with the rain and the forecast for 10 days, I doubt the two-week thing was gonna happen. I don't know that, we'll have to wait and see.
Have they submitted any other stuff for payment?
Oh, no, I don't believe that we'll even get anything else from the, I don't think it'll ever come beyond the architect, from kind of what I understood, until things are buttoned up. You know, if a paid request was made, I don't think the architect will even probably submit it to us, because he knows when the city's standing on repairs and things before payments are made. I don't, again, I don't...
Do you remember how much money was held back on this contract?
I think 50% or better, but I'm not positive. I remember we paid, the only request that I'm aware of, and again, I'm not on the building committee, or roofing committee, but I know that request was made that would kind of cover materials used. I don't think any other payments have been made, do you know, Don?
No, I don't.
I don't either. But to the best of my knowledge, that's, you know, because we discussed that at this, at a council meeting about, you know, well, that would be a materials kind of cost deal, so we should probably pay that, and we did. And I don't remember talking about any other payments. Here.
Any other questions?
Answer, kind of.
I have the same question.
I see we have board members and also friends of ours who are here, did you have anything to say?
I think they're here to discuss that letter that was sent that we, because the council, at one point, the council mentioned that, you know, they can always reverse the decision to return Annie's lost time, that the library board had approved to carry over, and then the city chose not to carry it over, but could change their mind at a later date, and I think we're here to kind of discuss as to why Annie's vacation couldn't get used in 2020. Correct? I mean, I have some dates and times, and I understand better now how vacation is planned at the library after discussions with Annie, and looking at past calendars and current calendars, if you're so interested. She usually takes about the same vacation times every year, and as it worked out in 2020, those vacation times are two weeks in August, and then, let me see, on... Anyway, around Memorial Day, and then Christmas and New Year's. But her biggest chunk is generally two weeks in August, not concurrently. She'll unable to run two weeks straight, so she takes a week and then later takes a week in August. And as it worked out in 2020, she was scheduled, and I, she still has the calendar, they get together in the beginning of the year, the staff, they sit down with the calendar, they write down the days that the library's closed, and then calendar, or vacation time that's desired throughout the year, and they line it out on the calendar. And Annie did in fact have her regular dates in 2020 from the week of August 10th, then again, the week of August 24th. Those dates didn't work out, she was unable to take them, and there was a lot of problems actually around that time, one of the big ones being we had a lot of rain and it poured into the roof because of the roofing project wasn't going well, and it got on the servers and the internet was actually not, and she was working with vendors and everything to get that figured out. That happened to happen during her request of vacation time. Another problem she had with her second week in August was the construction going on around the road project going on around the library concurrently with the roofing project and their equipment being all over, and just basically keeping open and giving passage. And I think she probably attended a meeting, I don't know if she attended those construction meetings, so she'd know when she could drive on what roads or whatever, but anyway, that took a lot out of her ability to take those vacations. She did schedule her other vacation days, which she was able to take some in the end of the year, I think. But the other, oh, couple days of that too was, her scheduled vacation was lost because we had two, one full-time employee quit, you know, she gave her two weeks, but when she was gone, we needed to replace that person, that also fell during one of her vacation requests. And then later in the year, she had the two employees at two different times contract COVID and need to be out of the library. And they do run on, if everybody's not there, they aren't open. So Annie would rather provide good service to the, to the public and rather than close, which we talked about further at our last board meeting, because the board realizes that that falls on us as well. We probably didn't pay as close as attention as we should have as to what hours and where we were at in the year and what was going on, and she wasn't taking her, getting her vacation. And we've talked a little bit about, it may come to the fact that we're just gonna have to, during vacation, to get it used, the library will have to close. I don't think Annie's very happy about that, but the board realizes we gotta use the time that is given. However, the board feels we kind of dropped the ball on this, and we don't feel Annie should be punished for it and lose her time. Is there anything you guys would like to add to this?
But we have to address Tony. State your name, please.
Yeah, Sue Seifert. I think on top of that, the board needed to be...
Sue, can you say it again, because the people on TV don't hear that?
Sue Seifert. In addition to the board not staying on top of that, the fact of the matter is, last year was just...
True.
Had way too many other things going on, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And that's why, in a normal year, we probably would not have even dealt with this. But then we also had somebody who was out on medical leave, not COVID, and that was a long-term thing last year too. So, I mean, there was just one thing after another last year. So...
When the, when Annie, or is anybody at the library can't take their normally scheduled vacation, how is that communicated? Is that communicated to the board?
Generally, the director handles that. Generally, the library director handles vacation.
But if she can't take her vacation?
Right, and...
She tells the board?
Yeah, the board was aware, probably, I don't remember at that time, were we even having meetings? Did we even Zoom our meetings? I don't think so, you know, for a while, because of the COVID, when everything was actually closed.
I guess what I'm getting at, if she couldn't take her vacation, she normally tells the board.
Right, or at least somebody on the board.
How does that communicate it back to City Hall?
Well, that's what I'm saying, the board probably has dropped the ball on the whole occasion of that. And that would have to fall to me, being also on the city council, I should certainly bring that here.
I would also say though, as a board, our focus is making sure that the service stays open.
But I guess the point I'm trying to put across here is the board understands that we need to be able to communicate this stuff and pay closer attention to it earlier in the year, just like if it was comp time, and comp time not getting used, or building up too much, you know, these, that needs to also be addressed as a board. However, as Sue mentioned, our primary concern, it's always in our notes, we will know, but our primary concern is operation and funding and things like that. So granted, I'm here to basically say, we would like as a library board to see Annie's time returned to her, and let the fall, our blame fall on the board, and we will have to tighten up our policing of the hours and the time. Just I don't, I personally, and I assume the board, because I'm here talking about it, it just doesn't feel fair that we probably fell short for Annie and she's paying the price for it.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments?
Kathy Knutson Olsen? It's just been, it's, yeah, it's, I know it, I'm a sure woman. Okay, it's just been a hell of a year, you know, and when she lost a full-time person, and she had two people out with COVID, and there was another medical leave, it's very short-staffed anyway, they have the two full-time people, and I didn't realize that, I didn't realize that Julie Toonheim only worked 15 hours a week, I didn't know that, okay? And I don't know how often the other one does, you know?
I think Julie's also a bus driver and things, that hours...
Yeah, she's a bus driver too, she takes up early, yeah. She comes late in the morning and she leaves early to be on the bus, but she only works 15 hours a week, and I don't know what carry works, I guess I didn't know that, that it was that few of hours, so it really gets stretched, you know, it's tough there, it's tough there, and I think that is just a crazy year, and we should just give that a break, you know, that's, I think that's how we all feel, you know? Yeah, and I can't say I'm on top of anything neither, because I wasn't going to any meetings, you know, during, I'm real careful, I've got some health conditions that, you know, would put me at great risk for COVID, so until I got vaxxed up, I've been really, you know, keeping, keeping close to home, working a half day at the Mercantile even after we opened and things like that. And I just think this was a unique year, and we just have to bend with it being a unique year, you know, and I think that will go a long way to mending some fences, you know? So I would ask you to consider doing that.
Anyone else?
One more thing for the board that we've kind of discussed, but maybe, and Kurt said this, maybe our only option is to start severely curtailing hours during weeks that we have people on vacation. I mean, the only other option is to hire more people, and that's not feasible, because there's really no need for any more people for a normal year, but when we have those vacation times, we may have to have it, you know, have signs up that the library's not going to be open, or it only have a few hours a day, or, and that's something that...
We're still discussing that as a board as an option, yeah.
But aside from having a ton more people...
Which we don't want.
Which is, yeah, and it's not, it's not necessary.
With the addition of Nanette, are you guys now, is the library now full staff?
Back to regular, yeah, that, Nanette's spot replaced the full-time loss that we had, yeah.
But you...
But she's still, I think...
You still have the person out for medical, did that, she not get rehired, right?
No, I think we're back, and that's one of the reasons we're able to, or hopefully shoot for this May 3rd when this pandemic is supposedly, things will be lifted, that we can go back to the full 46 hours of operation. And we're staffed, however, like Nanette's position is a really broad position, and there is some learning curve for that, so whether or not she'll be able to manage the entire circulation desk and everything going on immediately all by herself, I don't know that answer, but we are staffed.
Are all other libraries and Viking library system operating under less hours now?
Everybody, I believe, is under fewer hours during this thing.
Anyone else from the audience? Last call.
Cheryl Burna. And two, last year, when it was COVID, I mean, there's a lot more duties for Annie to have to do, you know, the books and the curbside and, you know, all of that, and the checking out, I mean, it's a lot, it was a lot for her, and to be shorthanded like that with, you know, two of them got COVID, one was on medical leave, Sarah left, you know, and Sarah had been there enough years that she pretty much, you know, could, knew what Annie was doing and could step in. knew what Annie was doing and could step in. Well, Nanette is brand new. So, I mean, you just don't walk into that position and make those decisions and be able to do it. I mean, it just doesn't happen that fast. She has to be trained, just like any other employee in a business would have to be trained. So I just think last year was just a really messed up year, and Annie had to step up, and I don't think she should have lost that time. So I'm hoping you'll reconsider.
Thank you.
Can you remind us what the employee policy is for vacation time?
I didn't know we were going to be talking about this, so I don't have my notes or any of the stuff we talked about before. But basically, employees are able to accrue up to 160 hours in vacation. Anything over that is lost. They don't lose it if, for a employer reason, they've got it scheduled and we have them not take it, or if we said, you know, we can't have you gone right now for whatever reason. And then after that, there was just no other opportunity. So if the city would have said, you can't take it for whatever reason it may be, then that vacation may be allowed, some will be allowed to carry over beyond a 160.
After your question?
Yeah.
And I agree with him. Last year was a heck of a year for all of us. And like we had talked about before, we had other employees that were in the same boat. Some lost vacation. Annie wasn't the only one. But, you know, I can't, I don't blame the board. To me, it's, and you guys can blame yourselves if you want to, but all the employees for all the years that we've all been here know the policy, and we've all done a good job in most cases of understanding that you can't carry over that vacation to use it. A lot of employees that really don't take a week or two here or there, they just, they take a Friday, you know, space it out wherever the case may be, so that they don't get themselves in a pickle. My, one of the thoughts going through my head that we talked about before, and again, I don't have my notes with me, but I believe prior to last year, the prior year, wasn't there also a vacation issue with Annie? So going prior to the COVID year, there was another vacation issue. Did the board drop the ball then? I don't, I don't think so. It's an employee's responsibility to make sure that they're taking those, and the supervisor's making sure their staff takes it. But regardless, there was an issue then. And if we, if the council reinstates the all 60 hours or whatever it is, if Annie's already having problems using vacation and using comp time, and you're going to stack 60 more on top of that at the end of this year, are we going to be carrying over or be asked to carry over more vacation? I don't know how she's going to dig out of it if she doesn't use the stuff up. You know, council can make this, make whatever decision they want, but at this point, because we don't have any of the information we talked about before, is it possible that we could sit down and take a look at, you've got new information, and take a look at, with everybody's notes or my notes in front of me, and see, you know, what makes sense? You guys, does she have to have all of it back, or does it make sense to basically give some of it back? I mean, I've got questions, but I don't know what the questions are because I don't have the information in front of me that I had the last time we talked about this.
Just regarding that, whether she gets all of her, some of it back, I, you know, I'm of the feeling she earned it all. She should be entitled to have it. That said, whether or not the board's to blame for dropping the ball, I think it's been an ongoing thing here where up until probably this year or 20, whenever we started talking about this mediation and the problems we've been having, is largely, we were very much as a board under the impression, reading our rules, that that was our decision to make. And it only started a little while after that about why is the library board making decisions, you know. I mean, fiscally, the library board's responsible for its budget, you know, I mean, fiscally. And then that decision was made by us in good faith, thinking that's our decision to make. It's now been brought up that it may or may not be, which we still don't have any words on from this MMV or whoever they are. So basically, again, I think it's the board's fault, not Annie's. And I don't think we should look into the future and say, well, jeez, if she gets all this back and she's got all this and has all this, are we going to be revisiting this? I hope not. But I don't think we can just willy-nilly say she's never going to be able to use it all anyway. It's not our decision to make that way.
But as a board, will you handle on, so she does use her vacation?
And if she can't get it used, then we will be in a situation where she would have to lose it. But we'll make every effort as a board to police it better, is what I'm saying. Not wait until, holy cow, we got six weeks left of the year, but she's got 10 weeks of vacation. It's not going to work, you know. It won't. Because she's a long-term employee, and she does have a lot of vacation to use, so it has to be planned out even better, or at least monitored better by the board. I'll take, I mean, that's what I mean. I'll take responsibility for that as a board member.
How's Mr. Abner?
You know, we've spent a lot of time on this, and you led the rules to us, and we made our decision. And I don't really know, we can't make special exemptions for people. I mean, we do that, and where do you stop? I just, I don't, I think it got dropped on us. I don't think it's fair. We still have issues that have not been resolved yet as far as the employees, I mean, she an employee, I'm a employee. I mean, I don't know. We don't know all that.
All we do know is they're, they're a city employee.
Yeah.
That the library board has all the fiscal control, but they can't do things that basically-
So to an ordinance, we can't pass an ordinance if it violates another ordinance?
They can't do anything that violates a city policy, and the vacation is a city policy. And you're right, it's kind of a gray area because your, the vacation basically is, you know, when they're on vacation or not on vacation, getting paid, getting paid, that's all, there's a kind of a financial aspect to that. But the bottom line is, they're city employees, and the library board, I truly do not believe that they can take an action that basically conflicts with a city policy, with employee policy. And the library policy is a library, or the vacation policy is a city employee policy. They can, you know, work with their employees, and when they go on vacation, when they don't go on vacation, no doubt. But they can't not, you know, they can't have their employees doing something, the employees down there, doing something different that conflicts with our vacation policy.
And so if we give, if we grant Annie, Annie's hour, the vacation time back to her, I imagine, since you said that there are other city employees that lost time, they would like to have their time back also?
I don't know that.
And were there other city employees that were granted carryovers by the city?
There was one city employee that was granted carryover, and she lost some hours, but she was granted some carryover because it was a situation where she could not take the vacation that she had scheduled, and we told her, you know, basically, I told her, you can't. You don't have anybody to work. So she basically carried over, she lost some, but she carried over a few hours. And that's why I kind of asked, asked before we talked about all this, is it all, or is it some?
Council?
Mr. Abner, this last year's been just awful for everybody, even if you didn't have COVID. So I don't feel any differently about the decision we made. I just-
I would just like to say, you know, she was short-staffed, too. And this, and, you know, she couldn't take her vacation. She had it scheduled, and she couldn't take it. So what's the difference between this young person that you told her, no, she can't take her vacation? So do you, do you look at when Annie's got her vacation scheduled, and then being she's a city employee, do you look at that and say, no, Annie, you can't take that vacation? Or yes, you can take that vacation? So do you treat her like a city employee, like all the rest of the city employees?
We tried to, but obviously that doesn't work because the board doesn't see, you guys don't see them that way.
But I know, it just is confusing because I know if I went back to 2015, Jeff Statham was short-staffed as far as patrolling. And you guys let him carry his vacation over.
Well, Jeff Statham has lost hours and hours and hours of vacation every year. He's never carried over, more than he allowed to carry over.
Then how come it was in the notes that-
I don't know what you're referring to, but-
It was December 8th, 2015.
If we would know we were going to talk about this, we would have been more prepared?
Well, especially when you bring up Statham and vacation, five years ago, I'd like to know the context, I don't know that. But I can tell you, Jeff can tell you, that he loses tens of hours of vacation every single year because he goes over 160 and doesn't get under a knee. I'll bet you lose, what, 100 hours every year?
More than that.
More than that? And I'm not saying don't give anything, anything back. I'm just, I'm saying, should there be more discussion based on other information? I mean, did anybody down at the library tell Annie she can't take vacation?
Do we have that right?
Well, I, I gotta say, we probably would have, as a board, to keep her open.
We need a yes or a no.
Well, I'm just saying. I mean, that's, that's kind of the only way to answer that because it wasn't, it wasn't brought up that way.
Okay, council, what do you want to do here? Like I say, we weren't prepared for this this evening. You would let us know this was coming, we would have gathered up a little more information.
Well, we spent a lot of time on this. I think we made a decision on that. We've, other employees have had to follow the same policy, and we've got to continue that.
Okay, you got to address the mic, not the audience.
That is our point. Don just said that he had an employee that got some of hers taken away, but not all of it. And what would have happened if we had said, okay, Annie, take vacation, we're just going to be closed for the month of December? We would have heard about that. Now, this is all water under the bridge. We will work going forward. But you just said that you had somebody who lost some, but that you gave her some of it.
And Kurt just said that you guys haven't basically watched her vacation. So who's supposed to be-
I understand that. And I said, this is all water under the bridge, and I'm talking about going forward. But I'm saying, you cannot be punishing Annie for this just because, I'm not going to go there. But you just said that you had an employee that went over, you told her she can't have vacation.
It was after conversation between the employee and I, does Annie-
Okay, but what I'm saying, you just, you just said that it's a possibility then, that you didn't take all of it, you took some of it. And now you're saying, well, Annie can't have any of it.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying Annie can't have any of it back.
Let's bring it back to the council.
I'm not saying that.
Let's bring it back to the council.
I'm saying let's have some more discussion.
Any discussion? If not, we're done with this.
I make a move, I make a motion that we replace Annie's lost hours.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Make a new motion. I don't know if I need to make a motion, but I'd like to discuss this further at our next city council meeting.
Do we know anything on the mediation process that we've started or achieved?
We sent the letter to the Bureau of Mediation Services. We had been communicating with MMV, Material Management of Material and Budget or whatever. And they, after they had it for months, I'm looking at them, they said, once they understood what we were trying to do and determine or determine, they said, we're not the right organization. We need to talk to BMF, Bureau of Mediation Services. And so I contacted them, and I sent them a letter, and I talked to her on the phone. She didn't want detail. All she wanted was a very simple, what is it, we're looking to try and determine. Don't give her all the facts and the background. And so I sent that to her, and I don't know if you guys have been working with the state of Minnesota under COVID, but it's absolutely terrible the way they operate. So she had it for a couple of months, and I sent her an email asking for a status on it. Well, she had to send it all over again. So I sent it all over again. She assigned a case number to it. I don't know what that case number is yet, but she told me she's assigned a case number to it, and it'll be assigned to one of their mediators, and they will be-
Okay, thank you. What we got? Item number 10, City Administrator Report.
Since the last city council meeting, I held a department head meeting. I also worked with the clerk and prepared for today, tonight's meeting. I had completed and submitted the swimming pool D and I outdoor recreation grant application, and we should know that application was asking for $250,000. And we should know by, I believe it's July timeframe. And I'm remembering, I'm resurging, right? July timeframe, whether we're going to get any of that grant. And that could be all of it or a portion of it if they do allocate some to us. I met with a resident regarding their property. They were looking to do some improvements with building and fences, you know, sheds and fences and stuff. So I met with him and kind of went over that stuff with him, so he kind of had an idea of what direction they'd be able to go. I attended the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting. I met with the city attorney over some various property issues. One of them was the Flosdor property that you had heard about tonight. But another one is one that we've been working on for several years that is over a little slice of property north, yeah, north of Susan and James Strand that we list as four and a half, or Fourth Avenue, I think. And it's actually belongs to an individual. And for that individual, when we did that street project back on Fifth Avenue, it was one of the properties that got assessed. And the mailings came back all the time. This person doesn't seem to exist. So we were working with Greg. Martin could get this property basically under the city's control because we do use it as a street. It's even got the street sign. So I was, met with Greg again because that hadn't gotten finalized or completed. And then also, I had found that the property that we have, that the city supposedly owned north of the post office, it was, it was conveyed to the property back in 1961. I stumbled across that that Quicklane deed was never recorded. And so the post office still owns it. We've just been owning it for the last 50 years. But working with Greg, it looks like it will finally be recorded. It was a little bit of a goofy thing there because when it was signed by, in 1961, it was signed by individuals. But that land now, still would be owned by that family is now a trust. And so there was some things that had to be ironed out. And it looks like that'll be recorded. If it isn't already, it should be soon. So it will be back to city property. And that's important because when we go forward with dam discussions, some of the things that take place down there when the dam gets done may kind of edge on over onto that property. So it's important that we have the control so we don't have to worry about construction easements and access easements and all that type of thing. I also had discussions with Senator Russ Muesen and Amy- I also had discussion with Senator Russ Muesen and Amy King regarding the swimming pool being listed in the state's capital investment fund program. And Amy did testify, the conversations I had with the school government was getting Amy set up to testify like she did last year before the legislature about the pool project in hopes that they would give us $1.5 million for the pool. So that went very well, she did a fantastic job, just like she did last year. So now it's just to wait and see where that's all going to pan out. And also prep for this severe weather week, the sirens will go off at 1:55 on Thursday and again at, no, 1:45 on Thursday and at 6:55 on Thursday night. And so just got some staff training we're doing and getting everybody set when the sirens go off. We send out the Smart 911 notices now, we just need to get a lot more people signed up because we had over probably close to 1,000 people on code red and we have about 190 Smart 911s. So we're going to be sending notices out to thirsty people. But I continue to work on the city website, continue to add information, especially as it relates to the 2024 project, the comp plan, planning, stuff that's going on. I attended Mindot's monthly 2024 project meeting, I also attended the public input meeting that they had the other night. There was about 50 people that zoomed in as a part of that meeting and took part in that, that was good. I continue to work on personnel issues, the police department issue that we were working on was partly over with, but that kind of opened up another, another door, which we knew it was going to, so you'll be at some point hearing more about that down the road, but also other personnel issues. I attended a virtual meeting with Artel County CDA again, they, we have monthly meetings, we have different topics, but this one was on just kind of a community update and one of the things that I asked them about was with this new American Rescue Plan Act, where we're going to potentially get 100, or 290,000, which we're close to, I think, in May, to potentially receive that in May, is the county going to continue forward with the, with the programs that they had so that they would basically be able to maybe receive some of that money to help Pelican businesses and nonprofits again? And they don't know yet if they're going to do that. Kind of hoping they are because otherwise there was some programming that we might have to try and establish we want to use our money that way. But we're also thinking they, let's see. Well, Mindot basically this whole week from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 PM all week long, they're doing a value engineering process on this 2024 project. And apparently what Mindot does on these big projects like this is they send all this information out to some engineering firm in another state, and I think this is East Coast somewhere. And this engineering firm takes a look at all aspects of the project and they try and see where is their value being added in the project and where is their, where is their value being, you know, taken away from the project? And not from a standpoint of pulling stuff out that doesn't seem to kind of increase the value or have enough value in the project, but it was just, it's more or less just to have a unbiased set of eyes, they're not community members, they're not that state of Minnesota, Mindot, but other people just giving them other eyes and thinking about things to see how they might be able to change or make the project better or whatever the case may be. So I spent two and a half hours on Monday morning from 8:00 to about 10:30, just my involvement in it was to help them kind of understand where the project's at right now with the options that had been explained to the council and everything else and then obviously Mindot had their people on too. The next time that I'll be taking a part in it will be on tomorrow at about 4:00. They're going to get back together again and I don't know, I'll probably be on it for an hour or so and then be off again. But, and that's the rest of that, I don't have anything else to do with it, it's just, I was going to sit in and listen to parts of it, but they said it basically be pretty boring, the stuff they talk about. So anyway, we'll see what comes out of that. I attended the short little local board review, will be changed the time. I also attended the 412 pools, swimming pool meeting last night and the planning commission meeting last night and I've also been researching utility rates going right back to, I don't know what, 1936, because we're trying to figure out how some of our utility rate structure got put into place because we are looking at utility rates, so that's my report.
Any questions for Don?
Yeah, I have three. Utility reports, water, what are you talking about?
Water, yes.
Okay. And then down that street by Strong, have we talked about that before or just...
Yeah, I think we had once before because, you know, when we started working with Greg to, to get it, you know, turned back over or basically to the city, I think it took some Greg, Greg Larson, or council actions to give Greg to start working on it, so yeah. But the owner is Sarah Brown, but Sarah Brown doesn't seem to exist.
She died years ago, years ago.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
Okay. And that's, we're talking that little kind of alley?
Right, it's a little 16-foot, 20-foot, whatever, it's a street we've been getting at the street, so.
Okay, can I ask again? I missed that zone street meeting, can you give me a sense of what people, like you said 50 people, were they like from town or what?
I think it was probably a combination from town, from out of town. You know, they, they, just like you guys did, they listened to the whole presentation. I think Kevin, you were on too, so charm in if I missed something, but, you know, they just, as they went through and showed the different, explained the different segments and the different options, you know, people just had questions, I think generally. You know, there was comments that were, there was some concerns about whether we, whether we would want to put pedestrian infrastructure on both sides of the street, especially in places where, where maybe it would require removal of some trees and shrubs and bushes that would open up and kind of remove some property's privacy. There was a lot of discussion or comments surrounding the roundabouts, you know, the concerns with those, especially from a pedestrian standpoint, but I think, I think generally it was just, for the most part, people were just listening and trying to understand what Mindot was, was, you know, has for options right now. There was a lot of information that people would try and absorb in the time that we had, but Kevin, can you think of anything else that, there was, you know, yeah, I don't...
It was, being, it is what it is, you know, I think it would have been probably a more productive meeting had it been an in-person meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think, there was a lot of, a lot of, well, we don't have any questions, oh, we got four questions that came up on chat and then we, they read through them and answer them and then they, and there'd be like dead air, okay, we're out of question, oh, we got more questions. And so there was a lot of, but it was, yeah, there was a...
You could send in questions and they had somebody read the question, the person that had the question didn't read it.
And I told Don and Brett this before the meeting, but I tried to get on the Cisco, what's it called, Cisco?
WebEx.
WebEx on the tablet and the tablet wouldn't support it, so. And then, so then I tried to get on my computer at home and my home computer wouldn't support it. So I had to get to my, my, Jana, my, my, actually my iPhone, I couldn't figure it out on my iPhone, so Jana had on her Samsung phone, so I attended the meeting on Jana's phone. So I don't know if we need to do something. And if I had that issue with this tablet and my home computer, were there others that had the same issue? So I don't know if there's some way that we can make that easier, make that, I don't know what that means, sir, I don't know.
Okay, any other questions for Don? Thank you. I remember 11 mayor report a few things I've done the past couple of weeks. I had a conversation with the mayor at Historic City Hall on March 31st, visited several businesses in our community, not only downtown, but within the community. I attended a local board review and legalization meeting on April 1st, which got rescheduled to April 22nd, had like three dates there, April 22nd. Attended a Pelican Rapids Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting on April 1st. Also, I was invited to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting on April 6th to give an update on the, on the city projects and what we have going at this time. Like I told them, come to city council meeting, there's never a dull moment because there's always something new that comes up and working on multiple projects at the same time. On April 7th, I spoke, I telephoned at Craigville, Alabama, NSI regarding Meals on Wheels at the Senior Citizens Center and told her that, you know, it's the consensus at that time that the city council was, would like to see the Meals on Wheels program continue in the future after we take ownership of the senior citizens building. So we're going to have a meeting on April 27th to discuss the commercial kitchen concept down there and also Meals on Wheels and Don will be attending that, Judy Tappett from Local Foods Local Places, Gloria Rattke from the Senior Citizens Group. I think we're going to have Danielle attend also, or I should, and myself. Attended Farmer's Elevator Cooperative Annual Meeting and Dinner at VFW on April 8th to learn about how much, you know, industry economic prosperity they bring to the city of Pelican Rapids. And they've been around for a long time, I think it's 116 years now that they've been in this location here in Pelican Rapids. And as Don mentioned, attended that Complete Streets Committee meeting on last Thursday evening, that input meeting from the public and like Don said, there was around 50 people and it was well-attended, a lot of great questions came forward and probably some of these people had never possibly heard of this for the, this is their very first time and they had first-time questions, which was great. We want to get the word out on it. Attended a Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities webinar regarding halftime report on the Minnesota Legislature for 2021. And as I look at this time, you know, our funding from the state is, everybody's going to try to keep it the same, I doubt if it'll go up even though there is a surplus forecast for the state of Minnesota, but nobody wants to say he cuts it down. Met with Pelican Rapids School Superintendent Brian Park regarding housing opportunities here in Pelican Rapids. They're having some new hirings coming into the school this, the next school year and they're looking for places for them to live here within our community. And then I also met with Administrator Sol to review the agenda for this evening's council meeting. Any questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. See no other items on the agenda, I see a motion to adjourn.
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel, Mark Graham, paper signified, was staying on.
Right.
All is the same. Adjourn. Thank you.
Wish I could figure out how to run my own finances the way the state does. Just, when you need one, just...